Good evening, everybody. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its citizens, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
And Clerk Straight is going to have prayer for us this evening.
Grandly grateful we thank you for the opportunity together to serve the people of Hampshire County, pray that you would guide and direct all that's said and done. And again, we thank you for your many blessings, for the splendor of the leaves that you've displayed for us. And we just pray that, again, all will be done in good order. And we thank you for your presence amongst us in Jesus' name. Be back.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, I'll call the meeting of the Hampshire County Commission to order for Tuesday, October 24th, and we are at 6:02 PM. With that, I will... The Commissioners had emailed copies of the minutes prior to the meeting, so I would take a motion to approve those or make any corrections we need to make at this time.
So moved. So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the minutes of our last meeting on October 10th be approved as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We will now move on to the Commissioners and Presidents' report. My report... This meeting will be short mainly because the items I worked on a good bit were... are on the agenda for this evening, so we won't rehash. Obviously, a good bit of my time was spent on research, emails, phone calls with our representatives and different folks for the concerns and letter that the Commission sent out in asking for some more information on the rail transaction. And we, like I said, will get into that as, under old business, one of the later items in the agenda. So I won't expand there for now. I am the Commissioner that sits on the Parks and Rec Board. This past Thursday, I had other obligations, but the President of that Board has sent me a summary, and I'll just go through that quickly here for the Parks and Rec. The Bingo will start back up at the new building up at Hampshire Park this Friday at 6:00 PM. And I believe Greg, the President of the Board, is here, so if I make any mistakes there, Greg, correct me. But again, Bingo, 6:00 PM at the new building. The 10th Annual Chuck Parsons Bowling Tournament is in November 11th and 12th this year. The Parks and Rec started something new down at the old Cape and Bridge Junior High with a pickleball tournament. It went well for a first-time thing. They had at least 10 teams, official teams, present. And the report is it did well. They had recently painted that court not only for basketball, but for pickleball as well. So the Parks and Rec took that building over fairly recently from the Board of Education, and slowly but surely, they are wanting to make that into a well-used community center down there. I won't hit on any other topics because we're going to hit on them in the agenda, so I'll pass the floor on to Commissioner Hott.
Okay. I attended approximately six meetings in the center last meeting. However, I don't think any of them are as exciting as what we're looking at tonight, so I'll yield to Commissioner Cannon.
Thank you. Yeah, I attended the Economic Development Authority meeting. Lot of standard business, the tying up the loose ends with the Hampshire Memorial Hospital. We have started talks with Aqua Bank in their quest to hopefully buy the rest of the tech park, but that's just in its infancy, so working on tax-exempt bonds and different things. We had a luncheon learned today that the Development Authority hosted. Big thank you to the Board and JT Hott for how well they did today. It was a really good turnout. Wouldn't want to misspeak on how many businesses were there, but the place was packed over there, and we had a lot of speakers. It almost resembled a Chamber of Commerce meeting. I joked. But it's something we're going to try to do at least a few times a year, maybe a couple times a year, get the businesses together, exchange ideas. I think it was a great thing. And while I was there, I did meet with Representative of Region 7. One of my goals, I was the local elected official on that Board last year. Commissioner Eglenture is this year. And they... While I was on the Board, we had this idea of a kiosk for kids that gives them access to the programs that the state is offering as far as our summer training program with... where kids can get into businesses through the summer and be paid, and the actual employer doesn't have to foot a lot of that bill where the state will pay for their training and for them to learn skills and get into the workforce early. And also, GED programs, different things on that software. It's really been upgraded since I was on the Board, and there's one in Martinsburg. And so I was kind of vying for us to have one, and the new goal of the Board is to get one of those in each and every high school in our region. And I said, "I'll take it anywhere, bring it to the court, wherever you want, just somewhere public." And they had a much better idea to put it up at the high school where it's better access, so I think that's going to be a good thing. We are working on a strategic planning committee at the Economic Development Authority. We had those Board members appointed. Of course, we spoke about the OmniTrack situation. And I also attended a special meeting on the OmniTrack situation at the Town Hall with the Development Authority, so we'll get into that at length later. Also, attended the Planning Commission meeting. The big topic of discussion was the energy's solar, potential solar plant, if you will, or solar farm in Cape and Bridge. And we invited them to come into a Planning Commission meeting to address the public's concerns on the panels, the contaminants that they're alleged to emit, and different concerns there, so I'll report back to the Commission. Reverend Newbles did oblige and said that they would address the stormwater runoff complaints there, and also the claims of Academy of Medled potentially coming out of their panels in Augusta. They were supposed to start construction by the end of the year, is what they briefed us on. Also, just to give you a little background on the construction, since the beginning of the fiscal year, Hampshire County's done $8 million of work. September, we had 3.636 million in construction. And I won't overelaborate too much more since we have a busy meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, you gentlemen.
Mr. President, if I might, I was going to tell both you guys before the meeting, but I did receive a phone call from former Senator Clark Barnes, and he left a recording. And I haven't been able to get in touch with him yet, but in his recording, he wanted to inform me that he's with a company that's getting ready to start the permitting process for windmills up on the Cape Springs behind the resort. So I did want to let you all know that, that that's going to be, he said, within the next two or three weeks, that he was going to start the permitting process, so I want both of you to know that.
Thank you.
Can you pull your mic a little bit closer?
Mr. President, one more thing, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, I know a lot of the individuals in this room I haven't seen lately, but a lot of people have things misconstrued on the Commission and the Planning Commission's role as it pertains to solar farms. If it was on county land or even Development Authority land, there would be a different dynamic there. But when they come to our county and pick an unrestricted parcel, that's... The only power we have in the matter is permitting, inspections, and then if there was a health issue, and then, of course, DEP would have jurisdiction over any contaminants or chemicals or spills or anything of that nature. I think a lot of people think if a solar farm comes to this county, it was because we gave our stamp of approval on that, and I'd like to be clear about that to the public that that's not the case. Other than... And we do have the ability in the West Virginia Code to give them a tax break through the Payment in Lieu of Taxes pilot program. And I know I'm being a little redundant to the Commissioners here, but it still seems there's some confusion on our purview, if you will, when it comes to solar farms in this county. And I'm hoping the lawmakers will do a little more to give us some authority in those matters. But... And I will say for the record, we have not given any solar farms any tax breaks. Just to mention Reverend Newbles singularly, that when we had our tax assessor figured up, it was roughly $4 to $6 million in property tax over the next 20 to 30 years, and they offered a payment of $100,000 to $150,000 up front, and then they amortized 20-year scheduled payments ranging from $20,000 and then in year 20, '25, somewhere around $30,000 to $35,000 for the last payment. But if you did the math, the taxpayers were going to lose about $4 to $5 million, and we did not choose to do that, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cannon, for that clarification. Clerk, do you have anything quick on the maintenance list that we can do, since we're running slightly ahead of schedule?
One thing in particular, I'd like to apply for a grant through the Records Management Preservation Board, and it's for scanning one remaining set of index books in the Record Room. The application would be for under $10,000, whatever match would come out of my budget. But I do need to have the President's signature on it this evening, so I can get applied by the first of November. I'm still waiting on the vendor to get back with me on a bid, but if I could get you all's approval on that and the President's signature, that'd be helpful.
I move we authorize the President to sign the application.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the President of the Hampshire County Commission sign for the grant that the county clerk is applying for. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Right there.
Let's just ask them for prioritization. I'm going with the Congress.
Okay, now we will move on to the parking lot and alley paving update courthouse roof repair recommendation. And Mr. Hott's here this evening to give us those recommendations.
Good evening. I think I've emailed you all pictures. We'll start with the parking lot improvements. What I had sent you were pictures of a facility done in Virginia in Winchester, was interlocking pavings about 12 years ago. That's a... Was done by a contractor that I knew pretty well, was actually there and was put in. But anyhow, the pictures show what it looks like, how they interlock. I know technology has come a ways in 12 years to these pavers. It allows the water to move through, and he did this one. It's right across from where the GE plant is because it was a very small area, and he did not have to use land for a stormwater detention pond by using these interlocking pavers on the street. When I was there a few weeks ago, took these pictures, talked to one resident that I know who's there and who's been there for a few years. He said it works when it rains. It doesn't last long, and it's gone. The only caveat with it is you need to have a rubber blade on your snow... You just can't put the metal down to it. They require a rubber cutting edge on the snowplow to do it. But other than that, it's held up pretty well, and as you can see by the pictures, 12 years, it does, seems like it works.
Those pictures you sent.
Uh-huh.
Okay, that's in a subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the main...
Now, they have them up here at the Town Hall, and those really look nice.
Right.
But that's... I don't think that looks so good there.
No. I mean, I'd say those were 12, 13 years ago, and that was the technology back then.
Do we... So with this, we're looking to apply for a grant for this?
Yes.
Through the Chesapeake Bay or the...
Yes, Chesapeake Bay.
Okay.
Yep. And actually, today in talking to an engineer, that what they have now are better pavers than these were. But it gives you an idea, these pictures of what was done then and how they've performed. So I think they would help. It would help us, and that's the grant, I'm told, is 100% funding.
Well, I think we should apply for the grant. There's no doubt about that, but I...
Would we have some discretion over how it would look in the colors, I think is what he's...
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm sure you have all different color aspects today.
I move we authorize Mr. Hott to work with our county grant writer and apply for the grant as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been a motion and a second that we work with Mr. Hott to start the grant writing process for the pavers on the parking lot. And as you gentlemen know, my only concern on that was... But I was glad to hear Mr. Hott say that it's 100% funding. But should we go down that grant path and then find we get the grant, but it must still cost as much as paving, I would just, at that point, want to pave it. And just, you know, being familiar with grants in the past, sometimes you get a grant and you do it, but then there's these hidden expenses. So if we started down that path, I would say we would be better to just pave it. But I'm all for the pavers, since there's a grant available, and we should try to get it. So with that, all those in favor of the motion and the second, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. The second item I have before you is above us. The roof, and as you can see, damage in the stairwell. We had a contractor here a few weeks ago evaluate the roof, and I hope you're the pictures that I sent out, you were able to see of the damage, and they sent a proposal for that, so I guess looking for direction on how you all would like to proceed with that, or if at all.
Can it be repaired, Mr. Hott?
He said, the contractor said it's past repairing.
Sure he would say that.
Towing to Mr. McBride, it's at least 20 years old, if not older, on the flat roof part.
What do we... What about the timeframe here, about the weather, as far as... I think Commissioner Cannon maybe knows a little bit more about that.
He probably knows a little more with the product material than I do about that.
It's a 60-mil rubber. It's supposed to get 30 years out of it. I didn't... Maybe the clerk would know, I'm not sure.
Well, 30 years see me through. But I'm concerned about what, like in the wintertime, should we try to do that right now, is what I'm concerned about.
Oh, the temperature, yeah, that was definitely a concern. I sent you gentlemen an email on the... You know, you want the ambient temperature to be at least 50 degrees for those bonding adhesives to take hold, and I've noticed that if it's an emergency, it's an emergency. If it's leaking, you have to do what you have to do. But I think that's a lot of the reason why these EPDM roofs don't get quite the life out of the substrate that you maybe would if you'd installed them when it wasn't cold, but...
The only thing he can offer, and this contractor's reputable, had done a lot of schools in Virginia, Charlottesville, and located in Inwood, Virginia. Anyway, they offered a 20-year warranty.
We've got to get it done. I mean, as you can see, it's been like that for years. It's been on some other places. I think we got some length. And since this is an emergency, gentlemen, I feel that we could go ahead and authorize the contractor to do this without putting it out for bids.
Did you receive a preliminary estimate or any other estimates?
I got someone here that I could get here as quick as I could to give us an evaluation.
The information you sent us, Matthew, was strictly evaluation information. We don't have...
Evaluation information from them, and their proposal was part of that, as you can see on the second page, I would think.
Did he give you a...
It was $35,000.
Yes.
Did he give you a timeline on the install?
He's expecting a phone call tonight, and they can get us on schedule if you all want to do it before they get on their schedule before winter sets in, so...
You know, they keep putting...
Hey, don't want to put you in a bad spot here, but I guess I am.
They keep putting down the old courthouse. This is not the... This is the courthouse.
Right.
That's the judicial center over there.
Yes, sir.
So I want them to get that right. I'm tired of hearing the old courthouse.
You're correct in that assumption.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to grant Mr. Hott the authority to work with the contractor. Do I hear a second?
Did they even make... He made a motion?
No.
I thought you made it, Bob.
I didn't make a motion, no.
Or were you just suggesting... Was that discussion? Okay.
Gentlemen, I just don't feel comfortable with being over $25,000, and I think it could be repaired until spring when it could be installed at a proper temperature. I mean, I know this week, but this is an anomaly. And the manufacturer, Carlisle Firestone, all the major EPDMs say it needs to stay above 50 degrees for at least 24 hours, not just 70 degrees during the day, and then we know at night it's going to go well below 50.
So Commissioner Cannon, and you are the roof guy, so I'll... You're suggesting a patch till spring? Is that...
I mean, I know it needs done, gentlemen. I just don't feel comfortable not putting it out for bids. I just don't... I know it's an emergency, and it's just not something I feel comfortable with.
Well, I'll get us off-center. Mr. President, I move that we authorize Mr. Hott to go ahead and contact Blackstone Roofing and see if they can get the project done within the time we face him before it gets too cold.
Okay, I'll second that motion. I would like to amend to see if there... What the possibility of a patch would be as well as going ahead with the project, so that we have two options there while he's up there again.
In other words, if something can be repaired to cut the cost, repair it?
Well, not permanently. I would say go ahead with Commissioner Hott's motion, but as an addition to that, if he had a feasible temporary patch to get us through to warmer weather, I would like to see that in the motion as well. If it is Commissioner Hott's motion, if he would...
I'll agree to that.
Okay. So all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Motion passes two to one. Anything else, Mr. Hott?
Coming Friday for the clocks.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Clerk Straight, do you have a five-minute item we can address?
I think exoneration is reasonable enough. You can probably do that. These are assessments with exoneration recommendations.
Exonorating the Hampshire County portion of this instead of the Hardy County. You see that? Both Morgan and Hampshire. But we're exonerating the Hampshire County portion.
Right, because their parcel is in all three, I guess, and it's noting that we're only exoneration our portion.
Thank you.
It's up, must be up there on the corner.
Mr. President, I move we accept the exonerations as presented by the tax assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the exonerations presented by our tax assessor since our last meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will now move on to our 6:30 agenda item, which was the Springfield Volunteer Rescue Squad Response Concerns, and I believe Mrs. Stewart is here this evening, chief for the volunteer squad there.
Hello.
How are you, chief? Doctor, you can pull the chair up. Good evening, Mrs. Stewart and those that are with you as well.
This is Sarah Phillips and Brian Stewart.
Sarah... The reason, uh, the commission, uh, has this on the agenda this evening is, uh, due to response concerns, um, and as you know, uh, a few years back, the commission, uh, decided that, um, for continuation of, uh, county taxpayer dollars, uh, to the volunteer squads, we asked that they meet a minimum of fifty percent of their, uh, call volume in their The Springfield squad recently, um, has not attained that. We also, uh, in this late spring, early summer, sent out a reminder of this to all the squads, um, but recently, the Springfield squad had, uh, responded in September one to September thirty, three out of twenty-one times, and, uh, so far in October, uh, with two responses this weekend, uh, three out of twenty-two calls. So, uh, obviously that is a concern, uh, for the commissioners as we are, uh, put in charge of the taxpayers' money and how it's spent and how effectively and efficiently that's done. So, uh, that's our reason for this on the agenda this evening. Commissioners, uh, Hot and Cannon, if you would like to, uh, have anything further to say on that, uh, I'll pass the floor to you at this time.
No, I don't, I don't have anything further to say. I do know that, that they've been, um, well below the response, uh, criteria for a number of months, uh, probably six or seven months, I imagine, and it is a concern. Matter of fact, we've, I think we've sent, we've, we've got a unit down at the, uh, at the Springfield Fire Hall, I think it's running, is it, I mean, it might be, I don't know if it's twelve hours or not, but we got one down there, I think it's, it's running twelve hours a day.
It's my understanding, uh, ten AM to ten PM, we do have a, uh, paid ambulance squad down there, uh, helping to cover that area. Commissioner Cannon?
Chief, if you could, gentlemen, I, I've talked at length with the chief here and, uh, I, I think that there can be some remedies here. Uh, I would like to give the floor to the chief for a second, if you would, just give us a little insight on what you've been going through. I personally know Donna here and, uh, you know, it's, I realize that I have a soft spot for her and, and Springfield. She's done a lot for us and, and my family and, uh, but, you know, we've both agreed that we can't throw good money after bad and, but if you would, I'd like to give you the floor for a second and, gentlemen, I'd like to talk about a few things that we've talked about to possibly remedy this and, and, and hopefully not be sitting back here in the recent future. Um, I think the chief was worried that, uh, tonight was going to be a meeting to pull her funding completely and I, and I hope that's not what we're gonna do here just yet, uh, but, uh, would you give us a little insight on what you're doing and the struggles you're going through and, and tell us if you have a plan or things in the works to remedy the response rate like we talked about?
Yes, I currently have, um, four people that are registered, signed up and taking EMT class in Fort Ashby. I currently have two new people that got their EMVO card to drive the ambulance and I have two people that are going to Wheeling, West Virginia this weekend to get their EVOC training so they can drive. Um, I know it's hard for people to come out and run with their jobs and all like that. Um, we have also agreed to put the narcotics box back on the ambulances and put ALS back on the ambulances, um, so that the medics can get on board to make up the crews with us. We have one narcotics box that we purchased years ago, we would just need to purchase a second narc box to put their narcotics in.
And, and gentlemen, I'm talking to our director and, and chief here, that seems to me to be the linchpin to, to solve this problem, uh, that there's, I'm not gonna get into the, the nuts and bolts of the disagreements and the relation, relational issues, but what I would like to see is HCSA and Commissioner Hot do like you did in Cape and Springs where we put a narcotics box, box in each one of the ambulances or whatever pleased the chief, if you want to put, do like we did in Cape and Springs where you put one in one ambulance now or do both of them. Cape and Springs did pay for the boxes, um, and, and we know they're not cheap, cheap, but the HCSA has advised that they will pay for the narcotics, it would be a separate lock box that they would have jurisdiction over, so there couldn't be any disputes over who's in whose box or whether or not you're equipped enough for them to help you make a crew, and the key problem in this whole situation is making crews so your response rate will go up, so we can justify the taxpayer money. And as you stated in our conversation, that you believe that, uh, if, if the medics would come back on your crew and, uh, run with you, that that would be seventy, eighty percent of your response rate?
If not higher.
If not more, so you, uh, or maybe you, I believe you said eighty to ninety percent?
Eighty-nine, yeah, ninety percent.
So, would, big thing is need to get the ambulances inspected first, correct?
Well, we have to get the narcotics and the ALS equipment back on, then I have to call the state, have them to come up and inspect the ALS part of it to give us permission to run ALS.
And, and this is what I like to see, I'm glad you came in, chief, I mean, forty-five years of service, uh, I'd like to see you go out on your own terms, you know?
Thank you.
Um, I, I think we can work together on this and, and, uh, you had talked about the ambulances and I will tell you, gentlemen, we had talked about some money that, uh, Springfield has and, and accounts, CDs and different things, and, and the chief had talked about, uh, what she would do with the ambulances once she does retire or Springfield ceases to exist if we get to that point and, uh, you know, and you can speak to this, chief, you, you've talked about, uh, burying the hatchet, so to speak, possibly selling or giving the ambulances to the county and, uh, also, you know, you, one of your requests was i- if we would, uh, put Mr. Stewart's name on the ambulances if you donated them to the county, which I've talked to Commissioner Agler about and Tad, I, I haven't met anybody that's, would have a problem with that. Uh, you, you know, uh, I think that's a small ask, but I think we can work together and, uh, like I said, the narc boxes are about eighteen hundred bucks a piece, it just wouldn't be fair for us to do something for you and not do that for Cape and Springs or some of these other companies. Uh, would you be willing to work with us on the narcotics boxes and the ambulances if, if it does come to the time where you do decide to hang it up?
Yes.
You would? Gentlemen, that's what I wanted to hear, um, that, cause that's a key component of the response rate is us helping them make up crews with our medics. Uh, was there anything else you wanted to add, chief?
Um, I have Brian Stewart here, who's with the Hampshire County Foundation, if by chance our doors did close, what to do with our funds and stuff. Brian and I have talked about it, I'll let Brian talk.
Yeah, so we, we have talked to the Hampshire County Community Foundation about endowing the remaining funds, um, to do something in the field of, of EMS, whether that be scholarships or purchasing equipment for the, the citizens of Hampshire County, that would, that is, will be in the background, um, if and when that day comes.
Yeah, and I had talked to, Commissioner, what, what he was, doctor was trying to say was, uh, uh, the remaining funds of the CD or sale of their equipment would go into what I recommend be a nonprofit, a scholarship fund to help young people gain EMT certifications or medic certifications or med school or, which I don't know anybody'd have a problem with that, but, uh, I think that's a great idea, I think that'd be a great way for you to go out on your own terms, it would be a great way, uh, for you to put a highlight on your career.
And we would like that to be designated if we did to the Springfield, Greenspring people.
Well, it would be up to you and your board, that's not of my business or, or anybody's.
Right.
Just as, you know, we just, I don't want to see anything happen like it's happened in Pennsylvania or these stories we hear about, uh, uh, these institutions cease to exist, there's large pots of money and then it seems to get divvied out among, you know, in-house and, and I just don't want to see anybody get in trouble and I think that's a great idea, but, uh, I think if, if the HCSA will work with you and Commissioner Hot on these narc boxes, uh, and then we can go from there, but we all know there's gonna come a day where you're holding the whole show up, I mean, everyone knows it, I'll say it, um, when you hang it up, it's gonna be tough for that place to run. I do like that you're moving towards getting other people certified, but, uh, just say I'm, I'm, I'm definitely scared, but when that day comes, we, we need to have a plan in place and if you would donate those ambulances or we could buy them, whatever the case may be, uh, I, I think that'd be an awesome thing.
You said you had four people and then two, so you've got eight people that's gonna be-
I have four people taking the EMT class now, I have two people that have their EMVO card, they're new, that got certified to drive the ambulance, and I have two that are taking a class this weekend for EVOC.
Okay, now when, when will they be able to, to, um, to run with the-
Two people that's in the E, that have their EVOC now can drive, they just have to be precepted. The two that's taking it this weekend have to be precepted, which is not that prob, it's not a problem to precept them. The EMTs, um, they cannot run until April. They can do precepting of running calls, um, once they've been in EMT class roughly two, three, two months, three months, something like that, then they can precept, but they cannot be turned loose until they have their certification, and that should be roughly around April.
What has been, in, in the past five or six months, what, what has been the problem with the response time?
Why are we not responding? I don't have the drivers because of their work schedules. I'm retired, I'm the EMT running.
And I know you've done, I mean, I know you've, you've served-
My other two EMTs work in Winchester, so their schedules with their families and stuff makes it hard for them to run, and I personally can only run during the daytime hours per doctor's orders, and I apologize for that, but my health's more important.
I understand all that and I understand, I do know that, that you've served there a long time, I, I think probably when you and Ray came back, was, you came back from Alaska, I think, and you started.
We came back in eighty-one and, uh, Ray and I got involved in EMS then.
Here's my concern, gentlemen, and, uh, well, before my concern, I'll, I'll say, you know, uh, Donna has been a champion down there for, for many years, um, so, you know, I want to applaud her for that. However, I, as commissioner and as, uh, someone who has to, uh, make the decision about the people's money, um, our immediate problem here is, and I, and I need to make sure the public completely understands, is, um, you know, the volunteer rescue squad has, has fallen to a performance of, uh, you know, we'll just take a quick average of the two months of less than thirteen percent of the time. We have four paid crew members down there twelve hours a day, seven days a week, and they're operating their ambulance out of the corner of the fire station. The property that the, the squad, the volunteer squad operates out of, um, that is only answering less than thirteen percent of the time is in the squad building. The squad, the property belongs to the taxpayers, the county. Um, the county has paid the insurance on the building and the insurance on the, on the, uh, volunteer company squad and continues to do so. However, you know, and again, this is, you know, this has been part of it from the beginning, um, here we are with the paid crew operating out of, you know, less than, than par situation and they're answering ninety-nine or ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the time. So, that's a concern to me, gentlemen, and I, I have to set the, the pride part of it aside because I do, I applaud the Stewarts and, and, and the rescue squad down there and growing up, I know it was a strong entity, but I think we all know that these entities have struggled, um, and that's why the ordinance came along, um, and, and again, there was, there was different opinions about that, but, uh, as one commissioner, you know, I've, I've got to answer to the public about how I spend their money and that I do it as effectively as I can. The current situation, I don't like, you know, again, we, we have paid people down there, we have ambulance down there that we, uh, is above and beyond, uh, what we said we would do with the budgeted money from the ordinance, we're way above and beyond what we said we could do, you know, and we had naysayers that said within a year we'd be asking for more money and here we are with a, with a third crew, um, but yet we have to operate out of the, the fire hall. So I, I just, I have some deep concerns there, gentlemen, that, you know, we're letting pride get in our way here of, of, you know, what's best for the citizens' money. That, and that's, that's all I have to say, um, you know, I, and well, I'll add, you know, that this is not something that's come on in the last three months, we did, uh, uh, as a full commission, uh, prior to Commissioner Cannon, it was, uh, even before that, we, uh, agreed that, uh, we would stick to that, uh, fifty percent, uh, response rate from our volunteers and, you know, the ones that do that, it is very helpful and it does help with the cost of ambulance service to the county as a whole, but that's, that's just my opinion, gentlemen, and, uh, I, I needed to take that time to make sure that the, the public understands and can see their, you know, what's happening, um, and I just, uh, again, I, I have no, uh, ill feelings about, uh, the squad down there, but I am concerned, you know, when we're, when we're using our, our paid, paid people are doing the best they can and a, a building and a property that belongs to the citizens, um, is, is housed by the squad that's not answering. So to me, that's immediate problem. That's, that's all, that's it.
Mr. President, I move that we, um, that we give the Springfield Volunteer Rescue Squad until, uh, December thirty-first to get their response times up to where they're, they're supposed to be, and if that don't happen, then we, um, refrain from paying the insurance and, and whatever other funding that we've been, we've been giving them.
Chief, when did you say that those individuals would be done with their training?
The four EMTs that's in the class will not have their certification until April, that's when they take their national registry, they have like four to six months roughly because they just started the class.
Yeah, gentlemen, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, of, of the short deadline, I'm not in favor of ripping the funding out from underneath of them by the end of the year, I'm not in favor of any of that and these, I just will say these response rates is just not a comprehensive way to look at anything. If you go by Cape and Springs, they do twelve to fourteen calls a month, if they respond to fifty percent of their calls, it's six to seven calls, what are we paying for that six, seven calls? If Romney responds to fifty percent of their calls, they're responding to forty to fifty calls a month. How is that a comprehensive way to look at anything? I disagree.
Well, I'll second the motion, uh, that Commissioner Hot made and, uh, you know, I, for further discussion, I, I disagree, Commissioner Cannon, you know, there has to be a way to, to grade this, this is the best way that there is, um, it's, it's the way most, uh, nine-one-one centers do it, you know, so, a- and the bottom line for me again is, is- So, and the bottom line for me, again, is I just want the best service for the citizens for their tax dollar that they can get. And we found a way to do that, and as long as we can continue to work with volunteers that can at least stay at half, half of the calls, it'll continue to be successful. So, I'll second the motion. All those in favor, second five of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes two to one.
I would like to ask, Mr. President, if would we plan as a body to support the NARC boxes, as we know that relates directly to the response rate and us helping them make up crews?
Let the HCSA look at them, I mean, Taz looked at that, didn't he?
Taz offered it, and we almost have a deal worked out, which directly...
We'll let them work it out.
Okay.
I would say we let HCSA bring us that recommendation formally, then we can look at it.
And I agree, Commissioner, Mr. President, I agree. I would like to see Springfield, when Donna hangs it up, for us to work together, for there to be county ambulances in that building, for Donna to become an EMT reserve, run with
We can work it out.
I will say, Commissioner Cannon, with our previous director, before, Mr. Malcolm, I had had him do all the research for the volunteers to work with the paid folks, and he actually got all the legal work for that and everything. It's up there, probably in a file, but nobody took any interest at all. Okay, we are slightly behind schedule, but we will move on to our maintenance portion of the agenda, and under old business, we have discussion of the South Branch Railroad potential transfer. Before we open that item of business, I just have a few clarification points. Number one, since we will have some public interaction at this business meeting, I'll remind everybody that these meetings are publicly, we are publicly being recorded, we are live streaming right now, and by being here, you are acknowledging this scenario. So, just like I'm on stream TV right now, when you come up, you will be as well, just so you know. Few clarification points before we open the last item of business. At our last commission meeting on the tenth, basically two weeks ago, the commission agreed with a vote of two to three to reach out and ask for more clarification on the rail transaction. Further clarification on that, we did not agree to join in on a letter proposed by the Romney Development Authority to hold up the transaction, as we did not feel we had grounds for that argument or agree totally with that argument. We did, however, feel appropriate, feel that it was appropriate, to reach out by formal letter, and we followed that up with many phone calls, emails, et cetera, to the individuals and representatives involved. And so, we followed up on what we said we would do last meeting, and the business here this evening with this business item is the result of that. This item will be addressed as county business, and our business here is gathering information from the appropriate representatives and officials involved. The county claims to have no jurisdiction in the decision being made. So, we will, as this business item opens, we will allow the representatives that are in attendance this evening, that we have made the effort to contact, and we'll allow them to speak, and we'll allow the public to ask questions. Lastly, this is not a town hall type setting. It's not your typical town hall, you're allowed to jump up on your soapbox and preach for five minutes about your opinion or your likes or dislikes about the issue at hand. This will be a business of the commission, these are business meetings, not town hall or comment sessions or a debate. Questions and answers will need to be one at a time, and you must get directly to the point. Again, I won't allow for either side to give me a five-minute rant on opinions or hearsay. I look to spend thirty-five to forty-five minutes on the issue, so we will move along so that people that want to ask questions can ask questions. If I stop you in the middle, it's because you've went entirely too long, and I want everyone to get a chance to ask a question if they want to. So, again, your questions need to be direct, to the point, with lack of opinions and comments in them, and I'll ask the same of the answers. So, again, the commissioners were able to talk to several of our representatives, we talked to the VP of OmniTrak in Strategies, and he promised us a local representative here this evening, and we have one of the commissioners from the state, West Virginia DOT, here with us, I believe, as well this evening. And in just a second, I'll allow them to introduce themselves, and I'm going to give each OmniTrak and the state ten minutes, if they want ten minutes, no more, to present, and then they can take questions from the audience. So, as long as everybody understands that, we will proceed. So, I would call for the OmniTrak's representative to speak for ten minutes, if he would like to do so. If we have more than one, that's fine.
I'm with the state.
Okay. And I'll let you guys decide who would like to go first, it doesn't matter to the commission.
Sure.
Okay, sir, come on up then, introduce yourself, and then you may proceed.
All right, very good. Full house tonight. So, my name is Stacy Posey, I am the Vice President of Operations for OmniTrak. On behalf of our owner, Pat Bro, and our company OmniTrak as a whole, we'd like to thank you for letting us, giving us the opportunity to share some dialogue and answer some questions. It's very welcomed. I'd like to just tell you a little bit about our company. OmniTrak is what we call a short-line holding company. It was started by Mr. Bro in nineteen ninety-six in Longmont, Colorado area, with the Great Western Railroad. Since he's expanded, we have twenty-five railroads in fifteen states and one Canadian province. Mr. Bro's a self-made man, he's a businessman. We are part of a group called the Bro Group, of which Bro Real Estate is part of that, and it's commercial real estate, some residential. That component, along with our rail, gives us a very unique niche in the market. We're able to bring things, warehousing, industry, rail, transportation. We offer a kind of a turnkey full service that no one else offers. It's been very successful, and it continues to grow in both terms of success and breadth. So, it's been, it's a very interesting model. We, one of our railroads that we own is in the eastern portion, in eastern Panhandle, Winchester and Western, goes from Hagerstown to Winchester, Virginia, the WW. Doug Long is the General Manager, Doug's with us tonight. We also have a portion of that railroad that's in New Jersey. Since we've had, we bought that railroad in two thousand nineteen, and some of the formula we use, you're seeing some of that come to fruition over there now, with Clorox coming in, they have a kitty litter plant, we're very instrumental in working with Clorox to help get that plant in. Procter &amp; Gamble as well, and now we're seeing CMC come in. That's going to be a very good project for that area as well. We use this, I travel a lot, I see this formula across the country, you know, so it's very good. Mr. Bro focuses very hard on being part of the communities we work in and serve, you know, they're all local folks, they live there, these are families that we hire, and, you know, we're part of those communities, we see it everywhere we go, it's a big part of our model and part of our philosophy. Safety is number one with our railroad, with our company. We were best in safety nationwide out of our industry, best in class. Of all the holding companies, we were best in class, and to date, we're trending better than last year. So, safety is paramount in what we do. So, we, when we started looking at this railroad and talking to the state, you know, we see, we naturally see, you know, we are a for-profit organization, we naturally see opportunity here. Our intent, and the state has made it candid and clear, that our goal here and our intent is to grow the business and to grow the passenger line. The first words out of their mouths when we sat down in Charleston was, we have to protect the passenger line, we have to protect the tourism, it's a major part of what we do here, first words. Second was, we have to protect the employees that are here, we don't want, some of these employees have been here twenty-eight years, we've got to protect these employees, and we've done that, we've made those employees that want to come over with us, that are coming with us, have been made better than whole, actually, I think they would say that too. So, for what we have in terms of a model, we think this is a fantastic opportunity. We came last week and sat down with the owners of the Potomac Eagle. What was supposed to be a thirty-minute meeting ended up being seven hours, and we rode the train with them, we talked about expansion, what he wants for expansion, how he wants to expand, and there's capacity on this route to expand that train. He said, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand passengers, we can run that all day long, you know, we do this, what we do is kind of what we do for a living. So, you know, I think they run about forty-eight, I think they're projected to run this year. So, there's capacity there, and there's opportunity for growth. We see, see it as an asset, you know, we see it as an asset, you know. I can, in full disclosure, I'll, one of my first staff meetings, I'll have all of my general managers sitting on that train, and we'll lease it for a day, and I'll have them captive and they can't go. So, this will be, you know, we certainly think there's opportunity here for everyone, and, you know, we're happy to be here, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm going to let the state speak now, and then we'll take some questions. So, if you'd just stay here close to one of the microphones and... Evening.
Good evening. I'm Steve Conley, I'm Deputy Commissioner and General Counsel for the Division of Multimodal Transportation Facilities. Little bit about our office, in July of last year, the legislature merged air, port, transit and rail into one agency, and that's our agency. So, the old State Rail Authority is now within the umbrella of our office. Commissioner Cindy Butler, who was the Executive Director for the Rail Authority for many years, is now the Commissioner. Little about me, I started representing the State Rail Authority as Deputy Attorney General back in two thousand thirteen, and so I'm working into my eleventh year. I started out as Deputy Attorney General, then I was on the board for the State Rail Authority, and then last year, Commissioner Butler asked me to come over and join the agency as her lawyer and as her Deputy Commissioner, and that's what I'm here doing. A little about this project, it did, you know, I know you all were blindsided, I know a lot of us were blindsided by the opportunity that was presented, but it came to us because of the successes that they've had with the Winchester and Western Railroad. It was impressed upon Senator Blair about what a good job they're doing, how they're expanding and growing that area through the rail industry, and at the end of May, OmniTrak came to us with a proposal. And to be frank with you, you know, at first, it was like, what is this? Where did this come from? What is the opportunity that we have here? Commissioner Butler and I had just gotten back from the American Short Line Railroad Conference in New Orleans, Louisiana, and everybody knows everybody's processes. We're unique, we're the only state in the country that we have our state employees running our state train on our state line, we're the only one in the country. And OmniTrak came to us with a kind of a conceptual idea of either buying the property or leasing the property. And Commissioner Butler and I had a lot of discussions with Secretary's Office, and we wanted to be able to maintain a kind of our thumb on the scale of how this rail line operates. If you don't know anything about the South Branch Valley Railroad, it was the old BNO line, the eighty-five flood basically took it out, it was then reconstructed, and the state inherited it. Through the work of Cindy's twenty-six years, she's grown that operation, she grew it from, with state revenues, state appropriations, state expenditures, dealing with the complexities of trying to run a railroad with state government. Can you imagine? She did, and it's her baby, she loves that railroad. She said the very first thing, and so we got this proposal, and what makes this proposal unique from anybody else? If, let's say, the Potomac Eagle had come to us in May and said, hey, we want to lease the railroad, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense for any other company to come in and just take our state employees' hands off the throttle and put their hands on the throttle, and then they keep all the revenues. Doesn't make sense, because then the state loses the revenues, we still have expenditures through the employees and the payroll and the staff to deal with, it doesn't make sense. What makes this the most sense is OmniTrak has a proven record, we did our due diligence, we did our homework on their company, they have everything from a mile and a half of rail with, in Cleveland to five hundred miles out west, the port in Savannah. This is a unique opportunity that another company never approached us with, to be able to say, hey, let us come in, do a lease option on the rail line. What we do is, through our real estate side, we find marketing opportunities, build the suit for our clients, grow and expand their operations, use the transportation line to be able to get it out, and then they make money on both leasing to their customers and the conveyance of the product going out. So, they kind of, it's a double whammy, it makes sense, nobody else in the industry does it, that's what makes it very unique. So, we see it from a state perspective, they're going to start sharing costs in the maintenance of this rail line, they're going to start sharing costs in the capital improvements on this rail line, once certain car limits are hit. Once they hit the growth and expansion that they have already presented to us in the prospectus, they're going to be taking on one hundred percent of the maintenance and the capital outlays for this rail line, and the state's going to have zero costs in that. Those things make sense, to have a public-private partnership where somebody's going to be picking up the costs, taking on our employees, which were paramount to our considerations. When this first was presented, in the room, we made it abundantly clear with those two statements, we take care of our employees, we take care of the Potomac Eagle, and those are being covered by this contract.
Thank you for, both of you gentlemen, for your presentations. Mr. Conley, if you would, there's a portable mic there, gentlemen. The way we'll do the question and answer part is, if you would like to ask a question, stand to be recognized, I will recognize you, and you will need to come up to the mic and speak into the mic. Since we started live streaming... Since we started live streaming this year, one complaint we get is when the audience speaks, they can't hear them. So, you will need to stand to be recognized. I will recognize you, allow you to come up to the mic, and you can ask either one of these gentlemen a question, and I will allow either one of them or both to answer. Commissioner Cannon, can you keep a timer for me on your phone there?
Yeah, also, Commissioner, I think if I asked these three questions that I surveyed about 200 people, I could save us a lot of time and redundancy. But it's your meeting here.
Okay. You are elective, elected representative of the whole county, so since you have asked that, I will yield the floor to you for the first three questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, the top topic is the safety of the train, which you've both elaborated on, that since the first iteration of contract, that that's being addressed. The other big one is third-party eminent domain concerns. And is that something you've ever done? Is that something you plan to do?
Is that on? Can you, okay. So, third-party eminent domain is, you know, we, I think we have the right or the power to do that. I've never, I've been in the railroad business 26 years and seen it exercised one time. It's very difficult, it's very cumbersome, it's very expensive, and it's very long. We see no scenario where that would happen here. There's, typically, when a business, let's say a large-scale business comes in, here's what happens. They look, they need a footprint, they need utilities, they need a workforce. Then they look at highways, they look at railroads, then they start talking to local economic developers. There's a whole process goes into this, and then they start pricing things out. That doesn't come to play here. That's not part of the equation, it's not part of the business equation that we go by and that I think, any railroad that I know goes by on the business side. So, I think the answer to that is no.
Thank you. The other thing I'd like you to address is, seems to be a lot of concern about you guys storing toxic chemicals or freighting toxic chemicals through the valley here near our waterways. Could you address that concern?
Yes, sir. So, I saw some of those concerns as well, where the comments we have at store on the W&amp;W. We have say, clan, sand, clay, and a couple of other inert minerals stored on W&amp;W. There are no Exxon cars, there are no hazmat stored on the Virginia, West Virginia side over there, or Maryland. This property, we will not store cars. We have no plans to store hazmat cars on this property for a couple of reasons. One, it's not conducive to that, because there's no place to put them. There's no sightings, there's no yards, there's no anything. And building railroad track is very expensive, and you typically don't build track to store cars. That's not a profitable way to make, or a good, efficient way to use track. So, and, you know, this is, it's just not here, there's no hazmat on this site here. We have other properties, other places where we have designated storage areas that if we had a customer large enough, we would not store loaded hazmat, you know. And I saw toxic waste as well, you know, none of that. So, the answer's no.
Thank you. The last one being, there's been, many individuals and even attorneys say that there have been NDAs put in place to keep the taxpayers from knowing about the contract or disclosing information about the contract, which of course, I will say that, I've done a lot of research on it, and we know FOIA has some exemptions. Is there anything in FOIA and those exemptions at which you would use to withhold the contract?
I've heard a lot of rumors from lawyers as well. I can dispel a lot of them. They're not true. I've signed no NDA. Now, I obviously have an attorney-client relationship with my agency, but there's no NDA. What, there were some demands early on, "Well, can we get a copy of the contract?" I'm currently holding version 10, okay? Version 10 of this contract that we started on in July. The problem with, if I had, number one, FOIA does have exemptions. If it's an internal deliberative document, it's not subject to FOIA. You know, there's certain confidences as economic development, if they're involved in it. But there's, nobody's signed any NDAs. What, the point of not just divulging a copy of this, because you know what would happen, it would get scanned and put on the internet. And if the first version of this contract went out, we'd still be fighting about the first contract version, right? It's like somebody starting to try to make a vase on a potter's wheel, and everybody's arguing about the clay that's laying there. A contract, you know, I'm in negotiations with the chief counsel's office for his company and their outside counsel. We talk all the time about this word. It's a 41-page document now, single-spaced. We've been fighting over words for two and a half months. So, there's no sense in saying, "Okay, well, here's the current contract." This has been going through evolution after evolution after evolution, and I'm holding version 10, and I'll tell you, there's still a couple of things I'm going to want to change before we ultimately sign it. So, no, there's no, there's no nefarious, you know, hide the ball, lack of transparency. It just does not elevate the discussion, which is, this contract has to accurately reflect what we want, which is protecting the state's interest, protecting the property, and protecting our employees, and protecting the Potomac Eagle. And I can tell you that this document does all those things.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. President. It's all half. Okay. At this time, I will entertain questions from the audience, and it looks like Mr. Streisel was the first one to stand up there, so come on up.
My question's very simple. Is there a process that the state must go through for a private company to buy something from the state? Because if you were selling or you were buying something, you would have to have bids put out. So, my question is, was this put out to the, you said there are many of these companies around, even have their own convention. So, was this put out to them and said, "Hey, we want to do this," and will there be bids made?
There, it was not competitively bid. The West Virginia Code, Chapter 5, Article 3A, is what sets forth the requirements for competitive bidding procedures. The statute that my agency follows specifically says, for this type of transaction, the requirements of 5A3 do not apply. And so, the competitive bidding, in that sense, does not apply. I also, just in an abundance of caution, checked with the Attorney General's office and checked with the Secretary of State's office for the Board of Public Works to determine, does the Board of Public Works have to approve it? And it does not. Now, if the Hampshire County Commission was buying a piece of state property, the Board of Public Works has to approve it. But if the state is selling to a company, such as we have in this circumstance, there is no requirement that the Board of Public Works looks at it.
Okay. Thank you for that question and answer. Do I have any other questions from the public? Yes, sir.
I'm from the government, I'm here to help. Doesn't feel fair to me that in America it's not put out to bid. I was in contracting, Dave's contractor, you know, it just seems like a, I don't know, just, it don't seem right to me that somebody comes floating in here through somebody, and then it's not put up a bid or other people. The one thing that would make me feel good is, any contract that is going to be signed should be out a month before to let people read it and review it. No sweetheart deals.
So, sir, what was your question?
Can we see the contract before they acquire this from the state? Are we able to see this, or do we get to see this after it's purchased? That's my main concern, that's all.
And that's your question?
That's my question.
No.
I've been married three times.
Same.
The first one was made in heaven. That didn't last. The second one was a guarantee.
I don't mean to be, but, no, I can't release the contract at this point. It is still deliberative, we're still going through the process, and I can't release the contract.
So, we don't know until after it's sold, then, correct?
That happens probably 100 times a day with the state. You don't see their contracts until they're done.
That's why you don't have a very highly regard for a lot of the government.
Okay. Next question. Yes, sir?
Good evening, sir. Alan Sirota. Have y'all mentioned Clorox? Are you going to be hauling chlorine gas and ammonium, chlorine ammonium through here?
No. The Clorox plant that we have over there is kitty litter. So, we haul clay and limestone.
That's all you're going to haul? And pass?
For that Clorox plant over there, yes. Yeah, there's no chlorine, there's no hazmat going in that plant.
Not going to be any chlorine gas used in there, right?
In the Clorox plant in Martinsburg? No. It's kitty litter. It's not Clorox. It's owned by Clorox. It's Freshstep, that's what it is.
Okay. I see this gentleman standing back here.
Councilman Hott.
How you doing, Ray? My name's Duncan Hott, I'm with the city council here in Long Island, also a private citizen. You said earlier that you would not store any hazmat, but will you put it on the rail?
So, today, there is no hazmat moves on this rail, today.
Today, but it could change.
If a company comes in, this is hypothetical, if a company comes in and has a hazmat product, we have what's called a common carrier obligation to haul that product. We cannot say no. The state can't say no, either. No one, no rail carrier can say no. That's a federal law.
So, where do you think the growth, this is a 51-mile rail, correct?
Correct.
51 miles.
52.
Okay. 51 miles. That goes from Greensprings, other side of Petersburg, somewhere in there?
Mm-hmm. South Petersburg.
That's where all the growth is. The growth is up around Moorfield, because of flat land, you know. Do you all anticipate any growth going in there if this rail comes through, you know, in that area alone?
In Moorfield or Petersburg? We certainly hope so.
Right.
Yeah.
So, right now, they're hauling stuff to the chicken plant, Pilgrims?
Correct.
And whatever else up through there?
There's some lumber and some lime, I think, at the end, yeah.
And is the Potomac Eagle going to be on the same schedule as they are right now?
I think, in talking to Ra, I can't answer that specifically, but in talking to Robert, it depends on his ridership. I said this earlier, there's room to expand. I mean, I've, I was...
Expand what? Ridership?
Expand, yeah, all of it. Yeah, I mean, this is a, I was with CSX for 17 years and ran trains in Chicago with this accent all the way to New York and, you know, 80 trains a day. So, capacity is gained in a lot of ways, primarily through process. You know, if we had to during certain parts of the season, we could work nights, we could haul the freight at night, we could work with Robert's crews to get out, you know, when they call out, we'll go in behind, or when they clear up. You know, there are ways to run freight and coexist on this line. That's actually, actually, our goal is to grow both. You know, we can do that, and do it quite well, I think. Again, we look at this as an asset, the Potomac Eagle.
So, it won't interfere with any of the Potomac Eagle as far as, you know, because there's people, and I go by there every day, and I see 50, 60 cars there. And out of state, clear from Indiana all over.
Right.
Out here.
Right. Yeah, and we talked on, and I'm just learning the operation, and we talked last week about, you know, the need to go north one day, south one day, some days to go both. That's just scheduling, it's just railroading. You know, that's, that's not a big deal for us. And if volume gets to where it is, we'll work something out. Those are things that, it's a very fluid plan, you know, a plan's better than no plan. So, it's a very, it's very fluid, and we will, we will ensure that we work with the Potomac Eagle and our operations to make sure that both run fluidly.
So, who's going to have the final say?
Mr. Hott, I'll have to stop your questions, because I've already let you have three or four. I did let Commissioner have three.
Thank you.
Because he does represent the whole county, but do try to limit your questions. One, or if there are two little short ones, but I didn't mean to cut him off, but he was on about his fourth question, so. Looks like Mr. Mayhew back here. Some of you guys in the back are standing, you might have to raise your hand, because I don't know whether you're standing because you don't have a seat, or whether you're standing because you want to talk, so just...
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Bob Mayhew. First question. Are the employees of the Cass scenic railroad state employees, or are they employees of John Smith?
So, I was part of the Cass scenic railroad transfer.
Excellent.
Yeah, and we, in the same circumstance, there was a lot of consternation about what was going to happen with the Cass scenic railroad, but the state was losing $1.7 million a year on the Cass scenic railroad. And they had basically one or two operational locomotives. Because of the constraints and things that the state has to deal with when operating an antique locomotive, they don't mesh well. And so, what ultimately happened, we transferred it over to the West Virginia Central, the Durbin and Greenbrier Valley Railroad. And now, I don't know if you've seen CAS, we've just connected Durbin to CAS. That was a project that would never have been able to happen had we not taken those steps in 2015. There were Facebook pages of the Friends of CAS and a lot of concerns about, well, what are they going to do, or they, you know? And now, the Cass scenic railroad is better than ever. This is what we anticipate for this transfer as well. So, the long answer was, they were state employees under the Department of Natural Resources for CAS, now they are employees of the West Virginia Central.
Excellent. Second question. I was there in '78 when the BNO gifted the state of West Virginia this 51-mile short line. I think Jay Rockefeller was governor. This county was promised a spur into its then industrial park, which is now the business park. I'm an economic development guy, and I think it needs to be said, we're not against y'all. We're in favor of economic development, smart growth for our county. It's a pristine county. Commissioners have done a great job of protecting it, so please don't think we're your enemy. But, that promise has not been kept. Now, I realize you're still in contract negotiations. I understand the secrecy, but I would just like to put a pitch in, wearing my economic development hat, for growth. And I guess my question is, are there any plans for that to occur? And thank you.
Sure. Good question. I spent about, or Doug and I spent probably, I don't know, 30 minutes driving through the proposed site. We know where it's at. We saw where, you know, the excavating had been done. We see the flood plain, so we're very familiar with it. I think it's 17 acres, I think that's right. So, you know, we're not to the point of making plans yet, we want to try to get through tonight, but it's certainly, we're aware of it, our economic development folks internally are aware of it, and we will, we will be looking at that piece very closely, so.
Okay. Ma'am?
My name is Victoria Carr. I recently did some research on the Bro Group, and I would like to know if it's true that you do not disclose your financial backers.
We are owned by one person.
Yes, but in this article, it said that he is, that there is no public disclosure of who the financial backers are.
Well, we are a private entity, and we don't disclose that public information. But I will say, we're owned by a family, one entity, so that is our backer.
So, Pat Bro is just like a multi-billionaire, millionaire?
He is, actually.
Really? Not funded by anybody?
You know, this is, this is our answer. So, you know, we're a private entity, and Mr. Bro, this is Mr. Bro's company.
Okay. I would like to just say that I'm going to continue on my petition. This is just one day of people in this county that do not want our railroad sold or transferred to the Pat Bro Group. This is just one day of signatures of people in this county, and I will continue on... This is just one day of signatures of people in this county, and I will continue on, and I will go to other counties, because I do not trust any man that doesn't disclose it.
This is a question and answer session, ma'am. This is a question and answer session.
Can I present these to you?
And you're welcome to do that in the county on your own time.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Anderson in the back there, I think, was the first one I caught my eye. Some of you are getting a tie when you stand up. I'm sorry for making you stand up so many times, but I can't quite see the hands all the time.
Hey, Patty.
Hi. Hello, my name is Patty Anderson, and I am concerned about our beautiful, pristine county, and we have a flood plain here, and I would like assurances that no hazmat companies come into our flood plain area and no cars with any types of mobile, I know you have mobile and Exxon tanker cars you store as a company, maybe not here, maybe not in Winchester, but we would like assurances, if you come here, that these things will not be part of Hampshire County's flood plain.
So, Patty, we, I said, as I mentioned earlier, we have what's called a common carrier obligation. If a company locates here, it's not our decision, you know, we would be part of it, perhaps, perhaps not, and chooses to ship product of any kind on rail, we are obligated to ship that. The state of West Virginia is obligated to ship that. Any rail carrier is obligated to ship that. So, I can't give you assurances on that.
Well, Mr. Long was here two weeks ago and told us that your, your yards were full down there and you had no more room to grow and that you were coming here to grow. And we ask if you can be the type of steward that we need here. We, we do have a beautiful valley and we do not, we want growth, but we want the right kind of growth.
Sure. We fully intend to be a good neighbor and to be part of the communities. We do this, we're not, you can't be as successful as we have been and not be. I tell everyone, I'm, you can tell, I'm not, I'm from Tennessee, I'm from the south, my territory runs Jersey to California and through the center of the country. And, and in each one of my railroads, you know, culture's different, it's different in California than it is in, in Martinsburg, you know? Not right around, just different. And in each one of those communities, we're ingrained in those communities and we have an active interest in those communities. They also have their different personalities, you know? Some communities are like this, they're very pristine, we like this community, I love it here. I'm from a coal mining town in East Tennessee, so it looks a lot like where I'm from. And we're also in Nebraska, where it's wide open plains, and so, we make sure that when we're in, into an area, we, we want to be part of the community, so we will be a good neighbor.
Okay, just one more question, and that was that Mr. Long said that you purchase land along the railroad and then lease to companies or sell to companies who want to come in and haul things on your railroad and produce it here. Is that correct?
That's one part of the model. There may be times when we do that, it's not the only way we do things, but we, that's certainly an option. That's a part of our strength to bring in, to bring in industry.
I understand that. Can you assure us that the industry that you bring in will not kill our valley in a flood zone, in the flood plain?
There will be several, several, several steps before an industry locates here, including this group seeing it environmental, it goes through, we're just a very small portion of what it takes to get a company located. It's a very, very detailed process, very engaged and involved process, so I've seen it several times with Mr. Bro's, several of his companies and with OmniTrax, and there's ample opportunity for all to have impact there.
Ms. Anderson, you've had three questions.
All right.
Mr. Hart, you already, you already went and I thought I saw, yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
My name is Nahama Miller, and I was at the meeting and following up what Patty just said, so it seems that I heard that there was toxic waste stored, but not in West Virginia because we didn't, you didn't have any land here. So, now you're acquiring land here, you admit to having toxic waste that's being stored, and you also say that you can't stop anybody who wants to use the rail, who's paying, from, from delivering toxic waste through our, to our state.
So, we have no toxic rail stored anywhere at any of our railroads?
You say no toxic waste?
No toxic wa, not toxic waste stored at any of our railroads. We do not have any. And we're not buying land to store toxic waste, we don't store it online. And as I've mentioned before, we, we have what's called a common carrier obligation. If, it doesn't matter what the product, we have to haul if necessary, and I say that because I can't give guarantees or assurances, you know, because of that, but we do not, we do not have toxic waste stored or, or hauling it to my knowledge right now, and...
Didn't, didn't you say, didn't you ask that question about toxic waste that they had stored somewhere else?
No, my, my question-
Last, last week, two weeks or whatever it was. Didn't, I mean, didn't, didn't that come up? I thought I remembered that coming up.
Well, for the season's purposes, that question has been asked about four times now. This gentleman's answer is no. You know, if, if folks don't agree, they can continue to do their research, but for the sake of hashing questions over and over, as your person running the meeting here, you know, the question's been asked four times, his answer's no.
Okay.
Ms. Calvert?
I have bronchitis, so I'm gonna be a little hard to hear. My question's a little bit different and I'm gonna actually read something, but you do realize this is the entire flood zone clear up through there, right? Are you familiar with the incident you had in Canada in a flood zone, the Churchill incident?
Vaguely.
Vaguely. Can I read this? And then the question is, I just want you to know about this. In 2017, OmniTrax suspended service on the Churchill rail line after severe flooding. Now, we had a huge flood here in 1985 with a lot of damage, we're doing another one. OmniTrax refused to repair the railway, claiming it was not economically feasible. The company claimed that due to the closure of the Canadian Wheat Board in 2008, it was no longer economical to operate the line on the port of Churchill. As part of a 2008 contract between the federal government, government and OmniTrax, the government of Canada had given them, given OmniTrax $20 million for upgrades to both the railway and port with the agreement that the company would match the funds. However, the contract stipulated that OmniTrax could not replace, reduce, or abandon service on the line or the funding would be required to be returned. On October 13th, 2017, Minister of Natural Resources Jim Carr issued a notice of default to OmniTrax, advising the company that they had 30 days to make repairs to the rail line or face default of the agreement. On November 14th, the federal government issued a notice of default against you guys, claiming 18 million plus interest. In response, the company found a, filed a complaint. Whatever happened with that?
I can tell, I'm not familiar with it.
You don't know about this?
I know about it, but not enough here to answer, but I will answer, answer this, we are very aware of the flood plains here. A major topic of discussion was the capital investment needed to keep this line open. We understand, and the state understands, that the bridges need work. Cindy has done a phenomenal job, and we think we can take the foundation she's built and continue to build on this. We understand that the 34 bridges out here are in flood plains. We've inspected every single one of them, we know the bridges. We will, that's part of our business model going forward, we're very, very aware of that. There's enough economic presence here and enough economic potential here to, to make that investment into these bridges, into, that we're willing to invest our own capital dollars here with, in conjunction with the state.
Well, my concern is that you signed a contract and you didn't abide. And that's, that's-
What is that from? Can you tell us what the source of that is? You just started reading.
Is it called Wikipedia, Wilcapedia, guys, however that's pronounced? And they're pretty darn-
Wikipedia.
Wikipedia, okay. And, I mean, I've got it right here, you can look it up.
We don't know what the contract terms were, we don't know.
Oh, it's all in there. I have a few, I only had a few minutes, but I want to know how that, you were still in litigation in 2017, it had not been settled. Now, I know that was six years ago, but you had signed an agreement in 2017 that you would accept 20 million toward repairs, that anything ever happened.
That was Canada.
Who am I talking to here? You are from Virginia?
I don't know, I'm asking-
Which one's from?
Okay, we'll, we'll stop.
I'm, okay, I'm not arguing.
There would be no back and forth, that was my rule from the beginning, to be no back and forth.
Well, he wasn't answering, in due respect. Thank you, and I'm glad you were here to try to answer. Thank you.
I'll take two more questions from the public. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Corbett. Could you tell us a bit, please, about OmniTrax's safety record? And specifically, in the company's history, have there been any derailments or any other serious accidents?
Sure, Rebecca. This will be in the company history, so it's a long history, and I've been here two years, so, I don't know if I can give you the entire history, but let me tell you a little bit about our safety program. So, I mentioned earlier, we are best in class, which means that companies like us that are holding companies, we were best in safety. We were best on derailments, best in injuries. We, we have a very extensive safety team and program. We do extensive testing at each one of our locations. We've already tested, had, we have brought an electronic simulator up last week and tested the engineers that will be coming over from the state. We'll be training the Potomac Eagle folks on what's called G-COR rules, which are general code of operating rules, which is what we operate on. We, you know, when we, we talk about history of safety, do we have derailments? We had, you know, we do have minor derailments. I think a lot of railroads, every railroad has it, actually. As far as major incidents, you know, since I've been here, no. Every, you know, I'd have to go back and look at the history, to be honest with you, I haven't went back that far to look specifically. But we, I would say we have a fantastic safety culture and a safety program. It's paramount what we do, and we start each day out with safety, and we will start this railroad out the same way. Mr. Franz and I had a very long conversation on the train about safety and how we can, there's already some things we think we can improve here, and not only the infrastructure, we can improve some of the operating rules and how we get track time, dispatching and so forth. We will bring in 24-hour dispatching, which enables us to work different schedules and longer hours and so forth, so.
And the gentleman from the state, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Steve.
Steve. So, you had said under the contract that OmniTrax would be responsible for maintaining the tracks, correct?
It's escalating, yeah, I mean, it, it starts out at 50% shared responsibility and then 75% and then 100% of maintenance and then capital outlays, once they hit a certain car threshold, it's 100% them. So, then the taxpayers of the state, and I know you guys are, you mentioned it a bunch of times in your presentation, we're all concerned about taxpayers' money. This is going to ultimately reduce the taxpayers' ultimate cost to this railroad and increase the economic opportunities for jobs, collateral industry jobs, tax base, everything that goes along with economic development.
Okay, and then, once you get to the point where OmniTrax is 100%, 100% responsible for that maintenance, would the state still have any oversight to ensure that they are, in fact, maintaining the rails appropriately?
We have a schedule in place in the contract where it has to be, whether it's us doing it, whether it's them doing it, or whether it's a shared responsibility, what the base minimum threshold is for maintaining the rail line, yes.
All right, and I'm sure, I know perhaps you can't comment on it, but I am sure the, the contract covers OmniTrax's responsibility, as Dot was saying, about if there is a flood and the tracks, you know, need to be replaced to ensure that they are doing that.
Yeah, that's one advantage by having it as a lease option, is the state's still owning it, the state can apply for federal relief funds and get those funds flowing quicker. If we would have another 1985 flood, it would, it would, the, the federal funds would flow quicker for us to still retain ownership, to get the rail reinstated and restored back to transit capacity.
Through FEMA. FEMA getting involved at that point.
Through FEMA or one of the other federal programs.
That's all I had, thank you.
All right, one last question, I promised two. Dorothy?
Hi, I'm Dorothy Kangla. Quick question, you talked about development in the Petersburg and Moorfield area. What type of development would you foresee for the Romney-Hampshire County area?
You know, we went and looked at the, the industrial park site, it's below the ATV company, I think, and, you know, these are just first impression things, you know? And it's a fantastic site for a transload area, you know, it'd be a good site for transload for a small business that was, you know, a lot of small business who, you know, trans, you familiar with transload? So, transload is, if you've got small business who aren't on the rail line, let's say they're two miles off, but they have a need to ship inbound raw material, inbound material or outbound product to, by rail, they can make a one-mile trucking run to a, a transload site, we load it on a railcar and ship it out. So, we're, we have one being constructed now in Winchester, one in New Jersey, we have several actually across the system. That was the first thing that came to my mind for Romney and that area there. Talking to Mr. Franz, and you know, he has some expansion plans there as well. It's kind of a road crossing there, it's kind of tough for him to block sometimes, so, looking at what we can do to help him get some more capacity there as well. So, I think, you know, that was the first thing that came to mind, you know, just my three trips here, so.
Okay, so, so you haven't had any companies requesting a rail line in Hampshire County?
No, we didn't want to get the cart before the horse kind of thing, you know?
But, but we do, the good thing about being a company like this, we have a big net to
cast, you know, we, you know, we, we, we have a very strong team of EDC folks and sales and marketing folks that touch companies that we all deal with every day nationwide. So, we hear things a lot and we hear what they're looking for and stuff, so, you know, we just, you know, we wanted to wait and see, you know, get, let the process work before we, before we pushed it too far.
Okay, well, I'll just say we want to be, as the concerns were expressed already, environmental concerns, the valley not being polluted.
Sure.
We had a company up in Springfield area called Coppers that used the rail line. Well, they quit, moved out and left a toxic waste site, so we wouldn't want that to happen in Hampshire County again.
I understand completely, absolutely.
That's it. Thank you.
Elwood, I may have missed you, you raised your hands a couple times, so I'll, I'll allow one more question, I think you had your hand up and a couple times trying. This will be the last one, last question.
My name is Elwood Williams. I grew up in Moorfield. I owned and beside the railroad, this road has been part of my life. I helped, at a time, it was very important to save this road, it was in the middle of the 70s. This railroad came up from abandonment several times. And I remember one time, we, we always had a group of people in the Moorfield area that would kind of work and, and say, "Let's keep this railroad somewhere." And then one day, they come up and they started to put new cross ties out, truce sort of cross ties, throw out all the way- ties, throw out all the way along the railroad. I said, "Boy, this railroad's going to stay here now." Anyway, a month after that, another abandonment come up. Timing was very important because Governor Rockefeller knew the president of Chesapeake, Hayes Watkins. Harvey Stiders and Kaiser was the head of Federal Railway Administration. Senator Byrd was the head of appropriations. Timing was very important. They gave us the railroad for $1. I accepted the ownership of the railroad in Washington in the late 70s. We had a lot of problems on the railroad in the early days. It was called the Chicken Railroad. And what I'm coming to is, Tony Kegel, over the years, has taken away that stigma of Chicken Railroad, okay? We have one of the best short line railroads in the nation. The 85 flood was a blessing in a way because we got new rail and so many sections of railroad, we got new bridges and trusses. And so, over the years, of course, I'm in the poultry business. I run poultry plant for 43 years. I know how important it is to have feed coming in, to see, the feed mill would never have been built in Moorefield unless there was a railroad.
Mr. Williams, I need you to ask your question. Or finish your point quickly, but I need you to ask a question.
My question is this. I'm for OmniTrax coming in and helping. We only got two unit trains in last year. This year so far, we've got seven unit trains in. A unit train is 90 cars. Each car is four trailer loads. That's 360 cars that have to go through Romney or Pierceburg. Moorefield is, traffic in Moorefield is terrible, it's a critical mass. My question to you is, my heart is warmed tonight, knowing all this group here has come to help support the railroad. We want you all to help work with Tony Kegel. That's my greatest concern about OmniTrax taking over, okay? This probably might, I'd like for you to say that you will work with Tony Kegel and try to keep him here. Now, what I would like to say is, I'd like to ride the railroad from Moorefield to Winchester sometime, okay?
Come on down, I'll put you on a train. Yeah.
God bless you all. This thing will work out, we all work together on it, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All of you.
Okay, I'd like to thank the public for their questions, some good, very good questions. Hopefully, what Commissioner Cannon and I did with the letter and reaching out, I feel we accomplished what we said we would do in bringing you more information, straight from the horse's mouth per se. And I would like to thank both of these gentlemen for sitting in the hot seat. I certainly know what that's like. At this time, I know we do have a couple of our representatives here, and I would give them the floor for just a couple minutes if they would like it. Okay, gentlemen, I do appreciate you being here though, and again, I thank you gentlemen for your presentations and answering the questions.
Thank you for asking the questions.
Okay, the county commission still has our day-to-day business items to finish. You can stay for that or not stay, but I would ask that you quietly remove... I'm going to pause for a few minutes, gentlemen, until the crowd thins out. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming.